First meeting of the month for the city council. If everyone can please stand, I'd like to ask Councilman Felix Gines to do the invocation, and we'll ask Chief Miller to lead us in the pledge.
As bow our heads, gracious Father, give up all good graces. We come to you, oh Lord, thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for the state. We thank you for the United States. We thank you for Biloxi, Mississippi. We thank all the leaders here who come on out. Thank you, Hallelujah Father, for what all you bestowed on us, and we ask all this in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the book which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and天地正正， God is the Lord. Thank you, Councilman Gines. Thank you, Chief. The chair entertain a motion to suspend the rules. It's moved by Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. The clerk would read the items.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5 CC resolution for 2022 management agreement with Ziffy Museum. Code enforcement hearings that own 6B owner should be listed as Rhea M. Slatter, June cert for 184 Rosetti Street. And to the retain agenda, we're adding purchase F for water and sewer supplies for Public Works.
May I have the agenda amended?
I'll second.
All right. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll second.
Let the record show by Mr. Lawrence and second by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries.
Mayor's report. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I do appreciate everyone being here today. This is the first meeting of September. My councilman is dressed in yellow tonight, and the yellow is the color of the childhood we're going to be displaying. I think Bill Raymond has got plans to light up the lighthouse in yellow because it is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. So we may do two or three things. I've talked with other folks along the coast, and we hope we'll shed some light and some hope for curing childhood cancer this month. So I do want to state that we're fully participating in the support of the battle, and it has touched me personally, the battle against childhood cancer. So it's a very worthwhile and strong cause. I also would like to ask you to spread the expenses of the Biloxi travel credit card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. They're being known. We'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
We had a couple of big events last week. Felix and I hosted the Sports Hall of Fame, was emcees, trophy giver, others, whatever. Worked out great, didn't it, Felix?
Absolutely.
He put the mood on, everybody pumped up, was all cheering. So we did well. And the nice crowd, they had 28 people inducted because it took him three years. They usually do about eight to nine, but so we're up to date right now. But the crowd, what'd you figure, 700, 800 people? Place was packed. That was a good thing. It's a good thing the city does. Now, the second thing is, I was a fan Friday last week, and I sat with a bunch of people from Sochae, Gulfport, Biloxi, a whole table full of pickleball people.
I was at the table.
Yeah, pickleball, and they were wondering, when the mayor's going to build up some little courts up there? So I said, well, we're working on it now. We've got the concession stand that's coming. We're going to try to get the courts done as fast as we can. Because they said they got a group from Hattlerburg would come down there every weekend and play because they have no place to play. The little courts, they're coming. So I mean, they tell you, if you watch it on TV, it's just unbelievable how big this has got because people can play it. And I said, well, how y'all doing? And he said, you see a lot of new braces, neck braces, arm braces, but he said they all play. So it's a good thing for senior citizens, and we should step up, Mayor. We number one right now, and we need to keep that up. We become a city of boxing. That's a huge thing.
You would have appreciated something that was on TV this afternoon. A announcer at the U.S. Open tennis match turned to another guy and said, this looks like pickleball, doesn't it? So I guess pickleball's becoming more famous. They talk about it even at the U.S. Open.
If you would have swapped the ball field for 36 inside courts, you'd be number one in the nation with people coming in. It's unbelievable to think this. And these people come in, they spend money. I mean, they enjoy the town, they love it. All the people said that. I would sit inside them, say they can't go out. They just love coming to Biloxi. And they go to casinos, they go to the restaurant, they do it. But it's just, it's time to step up and get it done.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gines.
Yeah, I just want to echo a little bit about what Joe had said. Yeah, it was a fantastic program, and like you said, about 800 people. I want to thank Sherry Bell. I mean, it took a lot, a lot of work to get in there. Cecilia MC in, so she did a great and wonderful job. So thanks again for putting on that great, wonderful program, 22 Hall of Famers. And I want to catch up. I don't see the Public Works director here, but I'll catch up with him a little later. Thank you.
Mr. Miller. Do you report? Okay. Councilman?
I don't have much. Mike, I got a couple of emails. I don't know if you've sent me another email about the issue over in Taylor Oaks and Lauren Falls. If you could, have you identified which houses that we need to get together with? I think in the last email you said there's a few houses, and you were going to identify which houses they were.
Yeah, this is Campbell, Mayor, this is Campbell Lane, where it rolls down into the neighborhood of Law- Loring.
Lauren Falls.
Falls.
Correct.
And as I said to you in the email, it's a really tough one in terms of what we ended up with, a big fancy development that was built without looking real hard at where all the water was going to be coming downhill from Taylor Landing. We've got two options, and they're pricing them both out. We'll give it to the repair replace contractor, and that's very high on our list right now to get to.
Well, I believe.
That was one we, you and I drove.
We did drive that one, correct. I believe in that you said there were two options, and we need to get with the houses that would be involved, with the homeowners that would be involved, and present those options to them.
If, is anybody, one neighbor that would host a meeting, or do we want to take the two?
Absolutely, no. No, there is a neighbor that would host a meeting.
Okay. Well, we'll get Billy Ray and his crew, his contractor, and put some drawings together and show them the two options.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. I'm going to get my report out of the way real quick. I'm sorry. Anything else, Mike?
No, I was going to say another one that Ward Three has been interested in for a long time, and that's the big round church, and that very unsightly drainage fault area out on the road, which technically is not a city problem, but it is on the list, and we're going to fix it.
All right.
All right. Thanks for sharing the good news there. I got a couple of things. Tunnels to Towers coming up on the 10th. It's been a well-attended event. Councilman Barrett is always one of the frontrunners to win the race or lead the race and all that kind of stuff. He's been training hard. I've been seeing him running out there. And his hair kind of, you can see his hair going in the wind and all that kind of stuff, but he looks good. But support that. I mean, that's a worthy cause. It's been growing every year. It seems like we got more signed up than ever this year, so it's quite an emotional event, and it's a good event and a good reflection on Biloxi. Thank you to the police department and the fire department and everyone that, Public Works and everyone that supports that. Also, grass cutting. The sidewalks are being overtaken on a strip at the cross-section of Pops Ferry and Cedar Lake. I literally walked them the other day. I sent some pictures, but they're little, it's a narrow strip, and we have some of the fitness centers that have runs up and down those sidewalks, and they just, they contacted me and asked me if anything could be done. And if we can address that heavy intersection that, I mean, just, it's probably one of the heaviest intersections that we have in Biloxi almost. And then finally, I'd like to ask my colleagues on the council if we could close this meeting in memory of Victor Marver, who passed away this week, and if anybody embodies being a gentleman. And he's touched so many so much in so many ways, not just the seafood industry and then being an innovator with Cozy Kitten, you know, being able to be an entrepreneur in that aspect, but his military career, which I didn't know much about, but I read his obituary and how he was so accomplished in his military career. King of Mardi Gras, he didn't ask to be king. The people wanted him to be king, and then so many leadership positions on boards, and just so much involvement in what Biloxi's success is. It's really fitting. We mourn with his family, his passing, because he was truly, truly one of those, one of those men that really embodies what Biloxi really is. We'll move on to Mr. Tisdale.
Yes, just a reminder, Ward Five meeting tomorrow night at the Snyder Center, always an exciting adventure. Starts at 6 o'clock for the faithful. Generally, we have 30 to 45 people there. Mr. Leonard and Mr. Gillich, Mayor, have you both on the agenda? Hope you can make it. If not, I'll just tap dance the best I can and maybe play a little piano. The Broadwater property, somebody sent me pictures down there, the marina and everything. I don't know whose responsibility. I don't know if it's public, private, if Tidlin's money is involved, but it's just, just needs apparently to be cleaned up. I don't know. I'm just passing that on to you, just based on the photos that I've seen. The only other things, I'd appreciate the council's support on item 4J, which is a short-term rental on Pass Road by the Snyder Center. Again, on Pass Road. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Tunnels to Towers, you have a report?
I don't know about that at-the-front-of-the-pack thing, but I hobbled to the finish line. But Tunnels to Tower is a great event. I think, I'm glad that this year the city's able to support that, and, you know, they help fallen officers, and so I'm glad that we're able to support that this year. Couple of things I want to say. First of all, it's good to see you back in the chair over there, Mr. Leonard. Welcome back. Then I would like to thank Public Works or Parks. I don't know who did it, but the ditch at the Eagle Point Park did get mowed. With that being said, echoing a couple of the other council people, our ditches, our sidewalks, it just, it's getting to a point to where every day I'm getting more and more calls complaining about it. I don't know what kind of money's left in the budget for this year for contractual services, but we have to do whatever it takes to get caught up. We're to the point now to where grass is going to start slowing down, but our ditches aren't, we just don't have the manpower, and we have to do whatever it takes to get caught up on that and get our city looking like it should. I ran last night from the mall to around the pink souvenir shop, I don't know what the name of it is, and the sidewalks all the way down the beach, it's just that whole area. Everywhere there was, somewhere there could be grass, it was overgrown. And so I know that's not my ward, but Biloxi's my city, and, you know, if I'm seeing it, the tourists that are coming here and visiting are seeing it. And so we have to do whatever it takes. If we, if Public Works, I know that we're undermanned grossly right now, but if we have to take contractual service money and hire a company, or two companies, or three companies, whatever it takes to get caught up, I'm all for that. We have to do whatever it takes.
Hell, drop me off a lawnmower, you know, at Pops Ferry. I'll drive it on the weekend. I mean, give me some gas in a lawnmower, let's go, you know?
So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Demme.
I'm sorry, Peter, I overlooked one of my notes. Did you put together a resolution for cooperation from the county regarding the concrete in the Bluffs area?
Oh, that one for me.
What's that?
We've marked, we've marked the worst of the panels, and the concrete contractor has been out, and then he owes us a price. As soon as we get a price, we'll get started.
That's right. Well, the last, I think the last meeting we discussed getting cooperation from the county, and I've had no luck with discussions with the supervisors, so you suggested that we just go ahead and do the resolution and get it passed and send it over to them.
Okay. Let me get the details from you on that.
Okay, thanks.
We got a meeting next week.
Know the solution to that.
You have a solution to that?
No, he doesn't.
Mr. Barrett will explain that one to you, inside joke.
All right. Council reports are now concluded. We'll move on to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We have a total of 45 minutes. Each person that is recognized will have up to three minutes to speak on any topic that you would like. This is not a question and answer, so just come up to the front, take a seat at the desk, write your name on the form, legibly, your name and your address, and state it for the record clearly for the clerk to report, to record. We'll start on this side of the room. Just raise your hand to be recognized. Yes, ma'am.
Did ready by the end of this. He was a captain. Well, no, they ain't not going to help us.
Hi there, I'm Sharon Davis, head of Biloxi Libraries. Our libraries in the last few months have lost two longtime employees to retirement. Jane Shambram with the local history department and Donna Posey, the manager of the Wool Market Library. So today, I'd like to introduce to you their successors. First, we have Mandy. She'll stand up. This is Mandy Lawrence Hornsby. She's taken help from Jane. She grew up in North Biloxi and Wool Market. She's got a bachelor's in history and English from USM, master's in history from the University of Edinburgh in Scotland, and is currently working on a master's degree with USM for library and information science. In addition to working with the local history department for several years, you may have seen her at some events, she's also been a school librarian for the Harrison County Schools, and she's also taught overseas as well. Now, our new Wool Market branch manager is James Skinner. James grew up on the Gulf Coast. He's got a bachelor's in mass communication and master's in history and a master's in library and information science. He's worked for us before while he was a student and also done an internship with our local history department. He's worked for USM as well as a teaching assistant and a fellow, and he's also done some local research on the civil rights movement here in Biloxi. He's active with, or has worked with, numerous community advocacy organizations here in the city, including the Biloxi NAACP, El Pueblo, Community Gardens. And we're really lucky that we were able to find well and truthfully overqualified candidates locally who are from here and already committed to the community and already doing the work. We're really looking forward to see what kind of new ideas they're going to bring us for service from here on out.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Come on up.
My name is Sharon A. Bear, and I live at 2510 Pass Road, and I'm here today. There, I have a ordinance on the agenda for my condo at 2510 Pass Road to make it a short-term rental. Just wanted to let, I'm here if there are any other questions about the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kevin Morsey. I'm also here for a short-term rental at my address at 283 Porter Avenue. I'm here for any questions, but I just want to throw out there, you know, this Biloxi is a tourist town, and, you know, besides entertainment, dining, and lodging, there's not many ways for the citizens to profit from the casinos and all that entertainment and that tourism. And this is one of those avenues, short-term rentals. There's a need for it, and my location is really close to a lot of improvements around the city, so I hope you guys consider it, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Anyone else this side of the room, my left? Anyone on this side? Okay, come on up.
Good afternoon, council members. Anthony Delviscobo, I'm here on behalf of Beau Rivage and also as a landlord of the property that's currently leased to the city as well as subleased to the baseball team, the Biloxi Shuckers. I'm here to discuss Resolution F, I believe, as it relates to a dispensary being located on the corner of Kyvet and Highway 90. Beau Rivage has not and has not ever come out against dispensaries. As a matter of fact, when the city council voted not to go ahead and allow them in the city, we did not voting, or asked this council to vote against it, or lobby for them to vote against it. But we do believe they belong in certain areas, and as the landowner of the property with the baseball stadium, our visionment was to bring a baseball stadium there where families, it would be a family atmosphere with children who attend the ballpark. And so when the city and Beau Rivage were able to agree to that, it built a magnificent facility that's still sort of catching a little bit air under its wings. And, you know, what I hear about the future of dispensaries is that the next step is to have some type of a open-air place where they can have on-premises usage of marijuana. I don't think that is a great place for the kids who are in the stands, or adults, or are visitors from out of state to take part in what is a family event at the baseball stadium in an open-air facility where they can smell marijuana. In addition, Beau Rivage has probably now over a billion dollars in investment across the street. We just put $95 million into our hotel rooms. We're the city's biggest taxpayer, the city's biggest employer. We also are the area's greatest tourism. We brought in our millionth customer. Tourism is one of our biggest challenges, and it's something that we take very serious, and we spend close to $40 to $50 million a year trying to bring guests to the Gulf Coast. We believe that dispensaries have a place. We believe in their purpose for medical purposes. We would just ask this council to make sure that they're in places that don't affect some of the other businesses and some of the things that we're trying to achieve here in the city and in our community. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left this side of the room? Raise your hand to be recognized if you'd like to speak. If not, I'll move to my right this side of the room. Come on up.
My name is Gwendolyn Beck. I live at 2037 Brasher Road, and I'm here to speak on the 66 homes that are about to be built at some point across the street on Camp Wilkes Road and Brasher Road. I want to first say that I am not one thus against progress, I'm just against it when it affects me and my surrounding living areas. This last month, when it rained constantly every day, my house was sitting like on an island. To the east of me, the rental property was, did some cement paving and left a portion unpaved, water dripped, it was in my yard. It wasn't, hasn't been like that before, but now it is. Then there's the water to the north of me across the street where they say they're going to have a wetlands area. I don't know how that's going to affect my house. I don't know how that's going to affect the neighborhood. They also, north of me, the water sits. It just doesn't drain at all. It drains to the east. One portion of it drains to the east and the other portion to the west. It just sits, and the only time that it leaves is when the sun dries it up. I don't know how the retention pond is going to fix that. The other problem I had concern, not a problem, concern is the traffic. And at the planning commission, they said, I think Mr. Preo said, that the traffic was not going to impact us. Well, they're going to build 66 homes, and it's a two-car, if it's going to be a two-car garage home, that's going to be 132 more cars. That's going to impact that area. It's almost like a war just getting off of Camp Wilkes on Pops Ferry going south. And now when you add these other homes in, that's going to be T Street, you can't get off if you're going south, and Camp Wilkes, you can't get off going south. But he said it won't affect traffic. I don't see how. Right now, we've got NASCAR in front of my house. The trucks going and coming at all kinds of speed. You all approve the golf carts? We've got children riding golf carts. The other day, it was a young girl with a hand on one wheel and a newborn in her hand, and she had to pull to the side of the road because a car came behind that was going to run off the road. That would have been tragic. So those are my concerns. The other thing was, which is unrelated to the homes, is that on the corner of T and Brasher, there have been three big holes. They're all summer. They came out, and it took them about six weeks to come out and put some tar in the holes. With the heat, the tar melted, so the holes are back. It's just getting to the point where we're all very concerned about the neighborhood, about this impact that these 66 homes will have on this very small area, compact area that I live in. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if you would, if you're going to stay here for the whole meeting, I'd love to give you my number so we can discuss some of these things in the area.
Okay.
If that's okay?
Appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to thank Dr. Tisdale because he answers all my emails.
Midnight. All right, midnight. Anyone else on my right? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Yes. Don't be nervous.
Oh, I'm very nervous. My name is Rebecca Morrow. I live at 13574 Huntington Circle in Gulfport, not in Biloxi, sorry.
We'll forgive you.
Like I said, my name's Rebecca Morrow. I'm a volunteer event organizer with the St. Baldur's Foundation for Childhood Cancer. I've been with them since 2008 as a volunteer. In 1996, I was 12 years old, and I was diagnosed with acute lymphocytic leukemia, and my parents had to hear the four words no parent ever wants to hear, which is your child has cancer. I was lucky enough to survive after two and a half years of chemo, two weeks of radiation, three bone marrow biopsies, 70 spinal taps, and two bald heads. Being bald as a teenager is rough. Kids are not very nice, so I wanted to do something since I was, sorry, since I was one of the ones that was able to survive, I wanted to make a difference. So in 2008, I attended my first ever St. Baldur's event, and it changed my life. I found out that 300,000 kids are diagnosed each year worldwide with cancer, and it's the number-one disease killer of children in the U.S. The government only provides 4% of funds for childhood cancer research, so St. Baldur's and organizations like it pick up the slack. 77% of what is raised by St. Baldur's is donated directly to the cause. It's donated to research to find treatments that are geared towards children instead of adults. Side effects from adult chemotherapy with children cause things like infertility, secondary cancers, heart disease, and lung disease. We're having our first-ever event here on the Gulf. I know it's in Gulfport, not in Biloxi, but we're trying to reach people all the way from Bay St. Louis to Ocean Springs and make it a whole Gulf event. Our event will be held Saturday, September 17th, from 10 to 6:00, and it will be a head shaving event at Bioview Park. That's one of the That's one of the unique things about St. Baldur's is we shave heads to stand in solidarity with kids with cancer. I noticed there's a lot of you that won't be able to do that part of it because there are a lot of bald heads here and I saw a lot of them in the fire department as well. But we're still looking to have the community involvement and just to raise awareness. The event will feature live music, a silent auction, food trucks, kids activities and of course, head shaving. The event is meant to be uplifting and informative and our goal is $20,000 and 100 heads. We're going to need volunteers, shavies and just, not to be blunt, but asses in seats at the event to show community involvement and just the fact that you guys care. As a childhood cancer survivor myself, even if it's only an inch of hair, it means the world to a kid with cancer to show that you're able to do that. I'll be shaving my head for my friends who have, and also for our local kids. I'm sure many of you have heard of Hendrix, a local kid whose dad is in the Biloxi Police Department who has a brain tumor. There's also Andre who has DIPG, which is a 0% chance of survival. He's a 12-year-old that's local here and he loves race cars. In 2019, a 13-year-old boy named Austin from Carrier passed away from Rhabdomyosomoma and his mom is actually fighting with me. There's many other kids. I know I ran out of time. So I know it's not an easy thing to talk about, but even in our community, it affects more than a dozen kids at least. September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and I appreciate you guys noticing that. So please come to our event, September 17th. I have flyers and we just need people there.
We took a vote up here. We were going to nominate Councilman Tisdale to represent us.
I'm halfway there.
I don't know, Barrett seems to have really nice hair. I think we should get him to shave his head. So, but the event's called Rock the Bald. I hope to see you guys all there. If you want more information.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Thank you so much. You did great. Anyone else on my right? Anyone else raise your hand?
Good afternoon. My name is Donovan Scruggs. I'm on the agenda as I don't policy for F regarding the medical cannabis at 100 Calvet. I represent the owner, Jay in Calvet, on this application. I want to primarily let you know that I'm here to answer any questions you may have. However, I also want to point out that at this point, medical cannabis is only permitted as a medical use. I believe when the city of Biloxi went through the processes of adopting regulations related to medical cannabis, it adopted it primarily on the relationship with pharmacies. It looked at a pharmacy as a can use. If you are familiar with the site, we actually are on the same site as another pharmacy. So the use is very consistent with others in the area. Also, I want to point out that while I understand there's gaming and there's tourism in the area, this area is also very medical. Biloxi Regional is located just to the north of us. There's also the Cedar River Oshner's location, well, not to mention once again, the pharmacy. So I do think this is a use that is very consistent with the area. I think it is something that is extremely heavily regulated. Some of the concerns that were mentioned earlier tonight are just not possible at this time and likely never will be possible. Keep in mind that it would require both the state law to be changed and would also require this body to make approvals for those, for new ordinance that would allow such uses. So at present, we're asking for a medical cannabis dispensary at this location and I hope you will grant us its approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Connor Reeves. I'm an attorney from Jackson, Mississippi. We have a small law firm in Jackson. We work with clients in highly regulated industries all over the southeast. A large part of my practice is working with medical cannabis companies. And Mississippi, I think we have one of the largest medical cannabis practices. I'm working with businesses all over the state that plan on entering this industry and are currently getting licensed in every city and county that has still opted into the program. Tonight, I'm here, I represent Field Nico and the Nico family who are heavily involved in the area. I've invested a lot of time and money into the city of Biloxi and as Mr. Scruggs mentioned, wanting to turn a property into a medical cannabis dispensary. As I've gone around the state and had meetings with city councils, boards of aldermen and board of supervisors, one thing that we find out in many of those conversations is that everyone has concerns. They have concerns about the program, but many of those concerns are tied to recreational states and states this is, it's gone beyond a medical use and which is not what has occurred in our state. As you probably remember, this was overwhelmingly supported in November of 2020. Over 75% of Mississippians supported this. City of Biloxi was the same way. 77% of City of Biloxi supported Initiative 65. And in that same vein, this is something that Field Nico wants to utilize his property to help citizens of Biloxi, the folks that qualify. And I think what needs to be kept in mind is we're not talking about some sort of theoretical industry that, something that could happen where it's unregulated and you've got people smoking on the street and people wandering in. This is an unbelievably, if not the most regulated industry in our entire state. It is regulated from the minute it is grown to processed, strict testing requirements, requirements for anyone that is associated with the business or works in a business, where those products can be sold and who can they be sold to. Getting a card, an ID card is incredibly difficult and even then, the stores themselves are incredibly regulated from not being able to display products in windows to allowing local jurisdictions to set regulations on signage. There's a myriad of ways in which these businesses are restricted like others are not. And so while I know that there are concerns about what this could become, in reality, this is about helping the patients of our state, about people that have diagnosed medical conditions and not about putting a location of a dispensary where people aren't. It's about we're putting it where they are and there's certainly a lot of people in this area I think would benefit from having this access here in this area. So if you have any questions tonight, I'd be happy to answer them. I'll be sitting in the back and thank you so much for your consideration on Resolution F.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Anyone in the back of the room? Anyone that I missed that would like to come up and speak? There being no one, citizens' comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Clerk would read item A.
Ordinance to amend the Point Cadet Marina and Biloxi Small Craft Harbor birthing rate schedule.
That move. Seconded by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. This is a first reading. Item B.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance to a new overlay district to be known as the Biloxi Commerce Park CRO District.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it. It's been motion, duly seconded. This is a first reading. Item C.
Ordinance to amend the garbage collection and disposal fees.
Moved by Mr. Darnes. Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Lawrence. This is a first reading. Move on to item D.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment from RS 10 Single Family Residential Low Density to RM 30 Multi-Family Residential for property located at 131, 139 Brady Drive and 15 Unaddressed Parcels from Brady Drive.
This ordinance was moved by Newman, seconded by Demming.
This request is for 17 pieces of property on Brady Drive. Brady Drive, of course, is the road that runs beside the Kangaroo Station. They're next to where the old Denny's used to be located. And what it is, is that the applicants are asking that the zoning be changed from Single Family Residential to RM 30 to allow for short-term rental. If this zoning change is approved, they would then have to come back and make a separate application for conditional use for the short-term rental. The property to the west is zoned CB. Property to the south is zoned CB. The property to the immediate east is zoned RM 30 already. And then further to that, to the east is CB already. All of those zonings already allow short-term rental. The CB is a use by right and the RM 30 strip is a conditional use and that's the purpose for this request.
That's all for now.
Okay. Mr. Demming? Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, our question, all the back part of the street is residential. On the back of Brady, it's all residential. Why do you go from RS 10 to RM 30? Why did double jump?
Well, because there's already RM 30 right next to it and anytime that you're asking for a zoning change, if you can extend a zoning that already exists, they could have actually asked for CB because they're right next to CB zoning too. This does what we call creates transitional zoning where from Highway 90, you have the CB, you transition down to the RM 30 if this is approved and then you transition to the single family, which is at the north end of Brady Drive.
I mean, the property they had that one, two-story house on it, 139, everything else was empty. They turned it into a trail park. They didn't do anything, that's for sure.
Well, the application says that their intention is to build houses there for short-term rental.
Can't believe that one.
Jerry, question. This kind of intrigued me when I was listening to it at the planning commission. So there are 17 lots. I would assume that you would have 17 property owners, one per lot, but that's not the case. From, as I recall, there's one property owner who owns a number of these lots. How many lots does that single property owner own? Do you know off the top of your, was it like eight or nine or seven or something like that? We'll say half. It could be nine, it could be six, whatever. My question is, were all the, because I'm curious about some things, were all the property owners notified that their property, if they owned one of these 17 lots, was going to be rezoned? The reason I ask that question is I know sometimes when we have planning commission meetings and there are rezonings or conditional uses, residents nearby, I think it's within 250 feet are notified by mail and sometimes they have, because you don't necessarily address it to who's living there, you address it to the property owner, wherever that person is. So maybe they're aware, maybe they're not aware. But how many of these 17 lots, were all the individuals, were all the property owners notified? Did you get something back so that all of them knew these properties are being rezoned?
Yes, sir. They would have been notified and many of them were actually on the application.
Okay. And is there a particular percentage? So in other words, if I'm somewhere else in the city and there's vacant property and I get with my good buddies around me and we've got five parcels and we want to consolidate those, do we all have to agree if we're going to rezone the block, maybe there are five property owners or is there a certain percentage that have to agree to do that?
Not necessarily. The, of course, the property owners that have made this application are actually the applicants themselves. But sometimes, what you may be referring to, sometimes whenever we're looking at maybe rezoning an entire block of property, there may be a couple of holdouts on the end, but the planning commission and the city council always has the right to weigh the number of people making the request and then can actually vote to approve those other lots as well if they think it works well into the project.
All right, that answers my question. Thank you, sir.
All right. Anyone else have anything they want to add? All right. Call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries 6-1. Item E.
Ordinance to amend, excuse me, the land development ordinance related to required minimum spacing between regulated business uses and protected uses in districts.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
This is one, Robert, that you suggested move at the feet from 1500 to 1000.
Jerry, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah, actually what he had asked for, he wanted to have the notation made that would alert anyone looking through the land development ordinance that there is an option to have that 1,000-foot distance requirement between a dispensary and a church, a school and a daycare reduced to 500 feet. And what we did, if you look at your table that we, this in your packet, what we did is we made a notation 3 at the top of the cannabis dispensaries. And if you look down at the bottom, there is that footnote 3. This is the way that we always, the land development ordinance always does this. So we've added the little exponent 3 in the name title and then we've added the language, this distance restriction can be reduced to 500 feet by obtaining approval from the licensing agency of the state of Mississippi in accordance with Section 23-4-3D8N2 of the land development ordinance. And that's what Mr. Demming had asked that we put in there.
Since my name was mentioned, can I respond?
Mr. Lawrence has the floor.
I don't see the purpose actually of changing. I mean, if he was putting there by the state, I just think it actually should stay the same. That's my opinion on it. I believe in these problems and sometimes we're going to look at all these different feet, 1500 feet, 1000 feet. I think if they said 1500 or 1000, they should stay there. That's just my belief. Thank you.
All right. So, thank you. George, that's exactly why I suggest that we put it in there, because the state didn't say 1,000 feet. They said 1,000 feet or 500 if you get the qualifying waiver from the other participants. And so this is just, this exactly mirrors and mimics the state law. Exactly. That's all I did. I agree with you 100%. The state set the law and this should reflect the state law. So I think we're totally in agreeance and that's exactly what the state law says.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, currently the distance requirement is 1,000 feet, Jerry, and this would permit an option if no schools or churches objected and gave the applicant a letter of support or saying they didn't object, then that would reduce the distance to 500 feet, correct?
That's correct. And remember that they have to make that application for the variance to the state, not to the city of Biloxi.
Right. And as I recall, the statute said exactly what Mr. Demming stated. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? Clarifying? Okay. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries 5-2. Item F.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a medical cannabis dispensary located at 100 Calvet Street.
I know, but I don't know what to say.
All right. There's a motion to deny item F. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Original motion made by Mr. Lawrence. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence.
This is right across from MGM Park, which is telling children that they go to the ball game, their high school sports, their soccer game, they're starting with high school and young people and I just don't think this is the proper place to have one of these dispensaries. So that's why I said to deny it because doing the deal with 12 kids in that area right across the street and they have elementary data, a lot, there's just a lot of stuff going there with children at the park. So I can't support that.
Makes sense to me. Mr. Tisdale?
Jerry, question about zoning. So cannabis dispensaries are permitted by right in some zones?
Permitted by right in some, yes, sir.
Okay. And do you recall what they are off the top of your head? And do you recall what they are off the top of your head? I don't, but I'm hoping you can, but...
Well, what we did, we tied it to the zoning for pharmacies, but in this particular case, RB, CB is allowed as a use by right, but what we did in this case, in downtown area, we made it conditional use, because we felt that there were some areas that might be appropriate for it, some that weren't appropriate for it. We also made it conditional use in waterfront zoning, so that the planning commission and the council could take a look at each individual property to check the surrounding area to see if it fit in.
Thank you. And that's the point I was trying to make. I know it's permitted by right in some zones. I couldn't recall why it was a conditional use in some areas, but you said that's the downtown...
Yes, sir.
District. Okay. And that's why this request requires a conditional use. And that use, that conditional use, is determined by the collective wisdom of whoever these people are on my side of the desk here, our council people. That being said, I was just, I just wanted to make that point on the conditional use. It's discretionary, it's determined by the council.
The ordinance provides nine criteria for a conditional use permit, you know, that are being considered, and some of those things are making sure that they're not creating any adverse impact on water and natural resources, or that they're not creating loud noises or things like that. In this case, probably item C is the one that would come into play, and item C is where the council would make a determination whether or not the use is compatible with the character of the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have a comment? Being known, we'll call for the question. Motion to deny.
Kenny?
Yes?
You'll need to amend it to state the reason why to deny.
Okay. Do I need an amendment?
You'll need a motion to amend it.
All right. Chair, entertain a motion to amend item F. The reason to deny will be because of it being next to MGM Park and family-related entertainment.
I have something to say. I just have a concern. It seems like everybody's wanting to come in on downtown areas, so I'm just concerned that we're going to have one on every corner and two in the middle of each street, and it's just going to be not exactly what we're wanting. And then if it does turn recreational, which it will, depends on when, it's probably going to be chaos, and then, you know, that's what all the big cities, they complain about, that's what it's turning into. So that's my concern. Maybe we can, because I know that your office gets bombarded with all these calls, could somehow you give us some kind of map or something of where everyone is interested in coming, so that way we don't, you know, approve one here, and then we have to approve one over here because we approved that one, and, you know, maybe we can get an idea of where they're wanting to come, and maybe we can even establish, you know, how many in the downtown area. I mean, I don't know, but I just, I don't want to see our beloved city turn into, you know, that's it.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion. The reason to deny amendment, the reason to deny is because it's near family-related entertainment, namely MGM Park. Ball of motion. Moved by Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Then we can have some discussion.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence.
I just think I can do, and really, we should look at where these things are all at, and that's what we can do when we put it, we need to deny this because it's so family-oriented. Then we need to look at places we can put them. And finally, you do that immediately. And so is possible, like in downtown, but I don't think they belong down there, on the waterfront. So, but now you have to deny this one, and then I need, we need to look at that as fast as we can to put it on the table, to put them in certain areas, warehouse district, industrial, whatever, you know, not so much downtown and near the city. So, that's something we need to look at. But I definitely think we need to deny this on the basis of the family, the children, the family and people deal with that part.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Tisdale?
Jerry, as I recall, there's something, you mentioned nine reasons. One of those is compatibility?
Yes.
Would you read that, please?
Okay. Compatibility with the character of the surrounding neighborhood is the one criteria that probably would apply here, item C out of the nine criteria.
Right. So, Mr. Abyd, and I see you dutifully taking notes. Thank you very much. I want to be sure to include that phrase, just the compatibility of surrounding neighborhood. I think basically is what you said, Mr. Creel. You don't need to do anything now, just as long as it's in there, I think.
As long as you're stating this as part of your rationale for your decision.
That's correct.
Compatibility, I guess that's...
That's correct. That's correct. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on the amendment? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries five-oh. Now we'll vote on the motion to deny as amended. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries to deny item F.
Is that a five-oh vote?
Five-oh.
Thank you.
Move on to item G.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize the establishment of a new car wash located at twenty-seven fifty-eight Bash Road.
I'll make that motion.
That's seconded. All right. Moved by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Discussion, Mr. Tisdale.
As I understand, as I'm, it may be sneaking up on me. As I understand it, I see Mr. Wall out there. Thank you for attending, Mr. Wall. Looking at a new car wash in that area, I think it's part of the classy chassis franchise or family, however you want to phrase that. I have no objection to that and wish him much success at this new location.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any comments?
I think he's just actually moving his car wash downstream a bit.
All right. Any other discussion on this item? Being known, call for the question. All in favor? Item G.
What is this?
Car wash.
Best box.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Move on to item H.
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision plat approval for a sixty-six-lot, single-family residential subdivision located at eight-twenty Kimbly Road.
Chair, entertain a motion. Moved by Mr. Demming. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
All right. We have a second by Mr. Barrett. Discussion, Mr. Demming.
Jerry, can you go with this project for me?
Yes. This is a sixty-six-lot subdivisions to be located at the corner of Brazier and Camp Wilkes Road. It's been a wooded lot for a long period of time. It's recently been cleared, except for a few trees that are still left on the property. It has been a drainage problem, but one of the reasons it's been a drainage problem is because this property has never been engineered to control the drainage there. So, the best thing that can happen to a piece of property where there's a drainage problem is actually to go in and put in the infrastructure that would capture that drainage and take it to control points. The designer who is here, Mr. Reiman, has actually designed it so that all of the water would either run to the wetland area, which is on the property, or to the detention pond. And remember that with a development of a piece of property, your after-development runoff cannot exceed your pre-development runoff. So they cannot exhaust any more water after the construction is done than they're doing right now. It's just that the water will be channeled to control locations.
I understand that, and I'm aware of that. Have we seen the drawings? Are we aware or familiar with what the plan is? I know we have, we've had tons of other developments, and afterwards, we still had drainage issues or increased drainage issues for outerlying properties. Have we addressed, have we significantly taken a look at this and made sure that we're addressing the water runoff?
Well, this is what happens. If you approve the preliminary plat, then the developer will go ahead and create the actual infrastructure construction plans. He'll submit those to our engineering department. They'll review them to make sure that everything works according to the way that the preliminary plat was done. They'll calculate the capacity of the detention pond and check the wetlands and make sure that the water's running to the right locations. When the engineering department is satisfied, then they will allow them to move forward, put any infrastructure in, and once all the infrastructure is in to the satisfaction of our engineering department, they'll come back to the city council with final plat approval, so that y'all can review it at that time. And once y'all approve the final plat, then I'm allowed to start issuing permits to build houses on the property.
And Mr. Reiman, is he here?
Yes.
I don't need him to speak.
Okay.
I just want to caution him, when we talk about we can't have more water runoff post-development than pre-development, if you look at our, if you look at the amount of water receiving, it's increasing. So, if you take a standard today and we're seeing more water throughout the years, I don't know how you determine if it's going to be more or less. That's going to be an extremely difficult task to project and predict an increased amount of water as compared to the previous year. So, we're seeing this in a lot of developments, that they were underdeveloped for performing against the increased amount of water that we see currently today. So, I look forward to seeing your development, and that's all I have.
Okay. Who's seconding?
Nathan Barrett.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, let you go.
Barrett, second.
How much is this wetland? There's only been a problem with the water there. And then you went to water in town, and it's a good thing. So, how are you going to handle that? How much wetland, how much is probably going to be developed?
Well, there won't be any building in the wetland area. They've actually reserved that area. It's in the southwest corner, actually on the Brazier roadside. It's almost like another detention pond that they have up in that area, but there'll be no building in there at all.
Nineteen acres, how much you building on?
I'm sorry?
It says nineteen acres, how much you building on? This says nineteen point three-four acres. So how much acres you can't build on? Ten acres? Five acres? Two acres?
Two acres as well.
You know? Because then that shrinks all the size of the property, too. And we're seeing a lot of houses, now you're down to seventeen acres. And you got a drainage problem, it's going to go away. That's the line here right there, and that's one reason nobody else has developed it.
Well, until...
Because it was empty, it's been empty for a reason, Jerry. You couldn't develop it. You can't build on it. So, I mean, it's something you got to look in before you start passing. I mean, that's why, because you got to look at it. You people that live there, they can tell you that.
Yeah. The project went through the DRC, the engineering staff was there when it went through DRC. It's going through the planning commission, and again, their plans, their construction plans will be submitted to our engineering department, and until they're satisfied, no infrastructure permit will be issued.
You ever got up before in world market and you're still flood? So, I mean, that's something, it says that they do all the studies and everything, I mean, when you're dealing with water and soft land and wetlands, it's hard to get around. That's why the ballfields are sinking and everything else out there, AJ Park. I mean, that's, when you deal with that, you can't get rid of wetland. Just can't do it.
All right. Mr. Barrett?
I have no comments. I'm...
All right. Some questions. And I'm sorry, but we didn't have a staff meeting this week, so all my questions are the mayor's fault. Jerry, I noticed several things in looking through the transcript. It says that the wetlands upkeep will be maintained by the homeowners association. What exactly does that mean? If something's got to be done with that wetlands, if there's an issue, then the homeowners, I guess they chip in, or how does that work exactly?
The homeowners association would be responsible for making sure that the wetlands remain clean, that no trash filters over into the wetlands. They would also be responsible for the detention pond, to make sure that, you know what happens? As drainage runs into a detention pond, you're going to get silt in there that will actually build up and displace some of the water volume that goes in there. So it's also their responsibility to make sure that the water volume area that is created is maintained. We've had to do this on a number of subdivisions where we actually address it through code enforcement. We have to go out and make the homeowners association clean the property up in the event that they're not.
So, and that gets to be a sticky wicket, which is my question. I'm just thinking litter, sludge, silt, everything, and at some point, you start knocking on doors as a homeowner's president, saying, "Mr. Barrett, you need to come up with fifty-eight bucks by the end of the month. We got a detention or retention pond here to, wetlands to take care of," and, A, they may not even have an active or an engaged homeowners association.
In that event, what we do on a subdivision or a condominium development is that we have to write up every property owner in the subdivision to do it, and then the city typically goes in and cleans it up, and then that cost is spread out to each of the property owners.
And this is pretty typical in developments like this?
Well, most subdivisions that we do, they actually take care of the property, you know. Occasionally, you'll run into a subdivision where, no, we don't want to create a homeowners association. You know, there are certain responsibilities that go along with it, but we expect this to be a nice subdivision, and I, you know, my first impression would be is that they would maintain it. And a lot will be there.
Next question is in the transcript. It says, "A property is efficiently served by existing sewer infrastructure and water, which will require off-site extension project." Does that mean they're tying in what infrastructure they're going to put in place? They're going to tie it in somewhere else, I guess, on an adjacent?
Well, typically, what that would mean is that there's water and sewer available there, but it's not exactly at the location where they want to connect to it, so that there would be an extension to bring it up to the place where they actually want to connect.
Gotcha. The, so the two spots, the two acres of wetlands and the detention pond that the homeowners have to maintain. The, is that set forth in the deed or at the time of sale of the property to make the buyer aware?
Well, if an owner does their research, then what they'll do is they'll actually take a look at the plat, you know, that has this covenant written on it that they're responsible for it.
Yeah. I'm thinking short-term rental people who say, "I didn't know, I didn't know, I didn't know." And also mentions a mailbox kiosk, so the homeowners, the mail, the postal service will just stop at a kiosk somewhere and...
Well, actually, the postal service is requiring this now on new subdivisions. Rather than have to go door-to-door to deliver mail, they're actually requiring subdivisions to put in a universal kiosk at a location on the property where the postman drops all the mail off at one location, and then the property owner is responsible for picking it up every day.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you answering all the questions.
Mr. Guns?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the retention pond a little bit. Councilman Demming did mention a little bit about the, well, first of all, Ms. Beck mentioned something about the area being very, very wet. And so my concern is, and I'm, of course, interested in seeing the engineering of, once the water go into the retention pond, the retention pond gets full, I'm interested in knowing where the release is going to be and where the water is going to go, because at the end of the day, a retention pond is going to go whole so much, and once they hit so much, where's the water going to be released at, and how is it going to leave the area?
Okay. The way a detention pond, there's a detention pond and a retention pond. A retention pond is a pond that has no drain running out of it, essentially is a pond that stays wet all the time. A detention pond is sized to accommodate the capacity, the volume of the water that the engineers believe are going to be discharged out of it. But what they do is they size the pipe that goes across the street over to the bayou so that that water is time-released into the bayou at the same rate that it would be running across right now. One of the problems with this piece of property right now is that there's nothing there to control where the water's going. It's just running across the property and running across the street. Ultimately, it makes it to the bayou, but what this subdivision will do when they put the infrastructure in is control that water so that it goes over into the detention pond, and there would be time released into the bayou.
Okay. And that's what I'm interested in seeing, but that's done afterwards, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Director, I have a couple of questions. I'm sorry. Mr. Guns, are you finished?
Yeah.
Is there any ditch, runoff ditch along this property that it's tying into, or is it just the pond itself? Is there any other ditches? Any other ditches that the water runs into and runs off the property?
Not that I'm aware of right now, and I'm not aware that they're going to put any ditches in. You know, our ordinance says that they have to design the drainage in this, in any new subdivision to meet the one-hundred-year flood.
Yeah. The problem I have with doing that, we had many, many, many ditches that are now deemed wetlands. They originally were a ditch to catch the... They originally were a ditch to catch the water, to run the water off. And now they've grown into forest and large trees, and it's hard to get in and maintain them. And, and if, you can't even go in there now because it's a hundred thousand dollar fine if you step on a frog. You know, so I'm concerned about that in this development. I haven't really looked at it at length. Here's the other thing, on, you know, all, all planning is signed off on many of our subdivisions. And, you know, Mr. Demme is in heard at Lauren Falls, and, which has a water issue. And there's, there's more at Water's Edge, and there's more, and hinge in place. And all these drainage issues we're experiencing have problems that were signed off, but it's inadequate, the draining in these subdivisions. Pelican Bayou, you know, we, we've wrestled, you know, with, and I'm sure many, many more. And we just want to make sure, you know, if we're going in and putting up sixty-six, I mean, we're all for the development, I believe, but the concern from the citizens and, and the council is getting it right and make sure it drains properly, and we're not fighting this again. T and V Street, you know, those are two that is like a river, you know, anytime you, you go down those streets. So that's the concern right now. We, we're supportive, but we certainly want to be cautious and make sure we get this right and whatever needs to be invested to take care of this, that we don't have a problem in the future. We need to make sure that we don't miss that opportunity. That's all I have. Anybody else? Mr. Demme?
One last thing. Jerry, just, just food for thought. What if we addressed the ordinance, instead of having the ordinance state that it has to, the new development has to produce less runoff or no more runoff than it did before the development? Can we, can we use a, some type of percentage reduction so that way we can account for future growth?
That's, that's state law. That's DEQ regulations that, that we, we have to comply with. We actually have a, a stormwater inspector in our department that-
Typically, when it comes to state laws, cities can't reduce the protection provided by the state law, but they can increase it. So could we not increase that requirement?
I'll look into that.
Thank you. Again, just food for thought.
Hundred and ten, I'll make it a hundred and ten percent instead of a hundred percent. All right. Any other discussion?
Just the, the only, the only comment I'd like to make, and it'll be my last, is I'm concerned about the density, just that many homes in that space. And knowing the drainage and remembering before T and Streets, T and V Street were developed years and years ago, it's, I have concerns about that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? There being no other comments, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, resolution H? Those opposed? Five to two. Motion carries five to two. Did you get the members voting gay in there? Okay. Move on to the next item, I?
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a short-term rental located at 283 Porter Avenue A and B.
Moved to deny, all right.
Moved to deny, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second, the reason to deny, moved to deny for what reason?
Does not meet the non-conditional uses, and it sits right in front of residential neighborhood.
All right. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Nothing on the street but homes. And if you like the way it's had, it's 283 is the, you know, the ditch that's running out of Keesler on the other side of the ditch, was Desport Seaford. This sits in the neighborhood on the south side of the ditch. So I mean, it just sits in the neighborhood, and that's what we try not to do, the residential neighborhoods.
So I recommend denying that and denying conditional uses. All right. Mr. Tisdale, you seconded it?
Jerry, I was just, I'm, I'm curious. Have these, as I recall, it's a duplex, basically, apartment A and B. Has, has that been occupied recently, or has it always been occupied? Or do you know, or has it been empty for a year, two, or three?
I'm, I'm not aware. It, it looks like it's been very well-maintained, and my assumption would be is it's been occupied. Mr. Morrissey is the one that stepped up here and spoke to y'all during the public comments. He's the owner, and he could probably answer that question. But this, if you look at this property, yes, it is a single-family house up in the front, but the property's on RM30. And this duplex has been there for a while. It's sitting in the very back of the property. There's already a driveway that goes back there to it. And then the ditch does run along the side like Mr. Lawrence had said. If it were up on the street, I could probably see it being a problem. The fact that it's located way back in the back, you know, might make it not be so much a problem. But that's just my opinion.
It sits, it sits inside the residential neighborhood. Most of the Williams' old house, that's who lived there. You know, I think somebody in the family lives in the house in the back. I, I deal with these short-term rentals, they're keeping a lot of residential neighborhoods. And it's a definitely residential neighborhood. And I think Porter, Lawrence's house is all residential. You know, so I mean, and it does not meet all the conditional uses. Now, we're going to stand by the laws we put in place, and let's stand by them. And it's just one of these cases where it doesn't really, a neighborhood, period.
Could, could we have Mr. Morrissey come up just for a moment?
Yes, so about the property in question. Hurricane Zeta came, and I live in a flood zone, and it completely wrecked the apartment. So for the last year, I've been doing renovations. So it is very well-maintained. I live in a house in front of it. We live directly next to a ditch that runs-
It's a concrete drainage culvert that runs from Keesler, the south, and eventually empties into the bay in Keegan's Bayou.
Yes, yeah. And, and so it occasionally floods. So this would be a big perk for having a short-term rental, because we did have long-term rentals. Renters, when we bought the house, and we kept the same long-term renters, but after that storm, it, it did a lot of damage to the house, so I had to clean it up and refurbish it. And that's another big reason why we're looking at short-term rental, is when a storm comes, I can cancel the bookings, send people home, have nobody there. Last time, I got bitten in the face by a dog trying to save the tenant that was in there when it flooded. It flooded about four feet tall, and she wasn't too tall, so I had to get her out of the duplex. And I don't want to have to go through that scenario again. It's actually surprisingly easy to, to run a short-term rental, and that would actually be the easier option than running a long-term rental, in my case. And I'm also, at the moment, I'm applying for both apartment A and B, but I'm only planning on doing short-term rental for apartment B. I plan on having sure apartment A is a long-term rental. I'm just, this is just to keep my options open down the road. And again, I'm right next to where they just built that, that Keesler main gate and visitor center. So right now, there is no businesses next to my house. On the community, it's a neighborhood business along the side of my, right next to our property. And right now, there is no business, but I was, I was expecting the city to want there to be business there. And I was expecting the city to want to have more short-term rental locations closer to places like MGM Park that you mentioned earlier, and as well as Sanger Theater that they're renovating. And ultimately, it is about money. And I mean, it's, you make more money from a short-term rental than a long-term rental. Kind of work and time that I put in will, will take a long time to cover those expenses if I do long-term rental. But if there's any more questions, I'm here for anybody.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Tisdale?
Well, you shouldn't have replied with long-term rentals right there. You don't need a short-term rental. Ideally, with the city, if you put that in there, that apartment has ten houses up in there, all these streets, there's apartment houses behind it, and either company except for the same thing, to make a short-term rental, not my house, the house behind me.
Yes, multi-family residential RM30 is, is for conditional use, so you guys can get an idea of who's, who's putting in, submitting for it. To my north side, I have no neighbors besides the Desports. It's across the canal. And I really feel like the short-term rental here would be good for the local area. The casinos take a lot of the tax money, and it goes somewhere else. And this would be something that could help impact somebody in your ward, in your city. And without this, it would be, we'd be struggling. I could make do. Appreciate if you truly considered this in its entirety.
I mean, which, which, this, the whole area you live around is not but residential. North and south side, up in down Porter Forest, all these streets are nothing but residential neighborhoods. And once you start, and once you start breaking it down and putting one short-term rental in, you, the town will, and you can't refuse the next people. So right now, I understand there are no short-term rentals in that area, period. That's all homeowners, and if they do rent, it's monthly rental or more, so.
You don't want, you don't want people to go through this process and pay the fees to see if they're eligible in that area, because it is RM30, so it is conditional use.
On the condition, you have to meet many requirements.
Next to my house, directly next to my house, another RM30.
I think we get the concept and everything. Any other questions?
No, just to address residential reboots.
I think this would do better for the residential neighborhood, because I-
I'm sorry. We're going to, we're going to move on here. Mr. Gines? Anything?
Yeah, this, this is, you know, I, I looked at that area, and with the Keesler gate opening up, this is, I understand what George's saying, and I'm sympathetic to what George's saying. But I think this here fits what we want. Because when we have people that are on TDY, and now that that's our new main gate, that's going to kind of serve as a purpose. And I've met people on, on Keesler who enjoy having that opportunity right there. I think this should be an asset for the community. And, and like I said, I am sympathetic to what George is saying, but I think this fits what we would want to do, and I would love to see that there. So I'm going to support the short-term rental right there.
All right. Ms. Newman? Okay. Mr. Demme?
I don't want to sound like a copycat and say ditto, but, but I, I, I agree with Felix's assessment.
Mr. Barrett?
Sir, the way you were talking, do you live on the premises, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which one were you talking to?
The baby. I was talking to the baby.
Baby says yes. Baby says yes.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. So you do live on the premises?
Yes.
Okay. So if we hadn't have just built this gate and everything here, but I, I, I agree with what Mr. Gines is saying. This, I think this is a great fit right in this location. And I know right now, all the businesses and other short-term rentals and things aren't there. However, you have to have the first one. And I, I do believe that this, this will be a good fit for people on TDY and things of that nature. And, and I think this is sort of what we were going for whenever we built this gate and this road coming out here for businesses to have this sort of district. So because of that, and, and with him living, I, I know that on short-term rentals, a lot of times, one of the drawbacks is the owner of the property may be in another state or something. But with him living on the premises and, and being there to make sure that the tenants aren't going crazy, terrorizing the neighborhood, I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Only comment I have, you know, I would like to see if there is objection, to see more people come out and speak out against this development. I don't see a lot of that. I think Keesler Gate does change the dynamics and the character of this area. And George, I hear your, your point, but I think I have to agree with the majority of the council on this one. Another point? Okay, another point?
I'd like to amplify George's point, and there's a bigger issue here, and that is the large number of single-family residents in that area. And, and the fact that it's close to Division Street makes it ideal for long-term rentals. I don't know how many courses are out at Keesler that last less than thirty days. There may be two or three weeks, but most of, most of them, if folks are looking for off-base housing, are going to be there more than a month. So I don't think that it would be any problem to rent as a long-term rental. But the, the bigger issue, and, and I believe I'm on the same page as Mr. Lawrence, is that there are a lot of single-family residential homes in that area. And once you start with the, the short-term rental creep in neighborhoods, pretty soon you have, as Mr. Lawrence said, there, there are other folks. That's, that area has several homes with apartments on the premises. And I, I think that's Mr. Lawrence's concern. I'm familiar with the area, I know who he is. That's all, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Call for the question. All in, all in favor of the motion to deny? Let it be known?
Conditional use, all in favor to deny.
All right. All opposed? Motion fails. Two to five? Do I have a motion to, do I have another motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Newman, is there a second?
No move.
Second by Mr. Demme, discussion? Ms. Newman, discussion? No, Mr. Demme?
No.
Anyone else?
Call for the question.
Just, I guess we'll get ready to make sure we define the rights. That's why we're going with the city. So I want to make sure I know this, non-conditional uses did not met. So once again, with all the laws that we put in place, and yes, once again, we're taking down the rights. So if I throw them in the garden, and I'm looking at short-term, I'll put one in the church, I'll put them anywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Anyone else have any discussion? I just want to add, all due respect to Councilman Lawrence, there are some that we approve, there are some that we don't. And that's my final comment. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries five to two. Item K? I'm sorry, J?
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a short-term rental located at 2510 Pass Road, Suite 108.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Chair, entertain a second.
I'll second it.
All right. Second by Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Tisdale? I'm not going to vote for it, but- No, I get you. I get you. I ain't got to say I would approve it.
Mr. Tisdale, would you like to move one seat over? And that way we're at-
I want to be here close to the action. I'm not leaving till I have blood on my shirt tonight.
Mr. Tisdale, you have the floor.
Let me, let me, let me state that I vote for some short-term rentals, I vote against some short-term rentals. And here's my reasoning on this property. There's eight condominiums. It's an apex, if you will. And it's just east of the Snyder Center. So on the west side and north side of this property is the Snyder Center parking lot. On the east side is a short-term rental that the council approved probably eight months ago, Jerry, give or take. And that being the case, I asked Ms. Abear, who was kind enough to have a couple of conversations with me. Those are, those eight units are all condominiums. They, they all have individual owners. I have no prob, no problem with that, with its location, and the fact that it's on Pass Road, which is a major commercial corridor. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lawrence, you want to speak in favor or against this short-term rental?
I wouldn't want to speak in favor, no. Need all non-conditional use? No, did not.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gines?
I think Dr. Tisdale and I are going to start growing hair.
I've tried. It's not possible, Felix. Grow it while you can, where you can.
All right. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demme?
I'm good.
Mr. Barrett? I have nothing. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes six to one. Item K?
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plat approval for 12396 Airport Road.
Chair, entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Mr. Barrett. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gines. Mr. Barrett?
It's just splitting a three-acre tract into two lots, right?
He's, he's splitting it up so he can sell the other side to his brother. That's it.
All right.
Anything else?
Mr. Gines? Anyone else? Call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Chair, entertain a motion for the consent?
So move.
Second.
All right. Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Second by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Tisdale?
Go ahead, somebody else and come back to me.
Mr. Barrett?
I, I have nothing.
Mr. Demme? Ms. Newman? Mr. Gines?
Nothing.
Mr. Lawrence?
On F, what are we duplicating in the routine agenda? That F? Amendment to the losing.
Assessments, Jerry.
Assessments, Jerry.
Nobody knows.
It looks like it's a, these properties were assessed twice. I think we're just removing the double assessment.
That's, that's great.
Okay.
Say that again, Peter?
We assessed, we assessed one property twice, Mr. Lawrence, and we're removing one of them.
It's Scrivener's there.
And on, oh, with the, the bond? What were the calculations? What are we doing here? There's something wrong with the calculations or what?
Arbitrage group? Oh, that's the arbitrage group. Annually, they, they do the calculations for us and just tell us that we're in, in good stead. They are, I think we've used them at least the last five or six years that I'm aware of. It's required when you do these bonds to have somebody come in and do an annual, it's sort of like an audit or an assessment. And I don't think it was really previously done, but we've done it the last four or five years.
So did we get a good assessment or what?
Yeah, if I could add, and that, the main objective, as I see it, is to be sure that we're not sitting on the money and just earning interest. There's a limit to how long we've got to spend bond money. So the arbitrage looks carefully to see how, how much money's left in the bond and how old it is and how much money we've made in the way of interest.
Yeah, and if we, if we borrowed it at 2.7, we can't go sell it for 4.0.
Is that it?
Yep.
Mr. Tisdale, come back to you. You got anything?
Yes, on, on item I, I. This is authorizing Unum, Providence Corporation to. There were some concerns last year. A number of city employees had payroll deductions, but apparently were not covered by Unum since Unum didn't know they were covered. The Unum, and I mention this because the Unum broker should be in contact with the city for new existing enrollments. So apparently, some folks were having deductions from the payroll and Unum wasn't carrying them on their insurance. There was a miscommunication somewhere. Item 5, I, I. And also, some, some employees who used to have Unum dropped some of their products, but they were still, apparently, this was all last year, so I'm sure it got straightened out. It's just, if we're going to do, continue to do business with Unum, they just need to communicate better, I guess, with the employees and the business office to know who's getting what deduction. So that's a cafeteria plan issue. Second thing is on item 5, JJ. I'd just like to make a comment. That's insurance, okay? Our third-party administrator, we're renewing that again for another year. And the administration really needs to do a better job of educating employees on, on insurance and what the dynamics are and how to resolve some of these issues. And I've, I've asked the administration to do this for a number of years and, and nothing's really been done formally, but it's, it's a communication issue. And I, I just think we need to be more responsive. I believe we care about our employees. Now, I will give credit to some of the department heads. They, they've gotten in touch with Psy, who happens to be here in the back if there are any questions. But we just need to get the word out to employees so that they're educated on how this works, who to contact if there's an issue and, and how to follow up. And that's, I'll go back to when we were talking about budget, having somebody designated in HR to assist those employees. I understand we have somebody who's fixing to be out here, if not already out on maternity or whatever. But it's just, we have to do a better job of educating our employees. And I know some of them want to be educated and some probably could care less until they need insurance. And then when they run into denials or denials of service or, or things of that nature, then.
I don't disagree with you. One of the things we did during this initial year of this, of this new insurance program is that we brought in an extra employee into Human Resources so that they, we added an employee. That freed up one of the employees to be the, the main deal where all the questions go to.
Right.
And because many of these questions are repetitive issues with multiple employees, she's become very adept at answering the questions over time because of the repetitive nature of the problems. So, but we're not where we want to be yet, but, but that is all, that all did take place this year.
All right, that's all I'm doing is, is trying to get folks to be more responsive. So we have employees or their families that don't spend hours on the phone trying to resolve issues.
Yeah, Jamie Lee, by the way, is the agent that takes the, all the calls.
Right.
And I think she's.
Good individual.
familiar with Psy. Psy's nodding and the affirmative.
Right, so that's, that's the observation I wanted to make there. As you know, Mr. Leonard, I did a, an insurance survey. I'll do it again in January or February and we'll kind of see how it's going. And speaking with Psy, with the insurance committee, met with him last week, I think it was last week roughly. And a, a number of issues that were slow-going, tough rows to hoe at the beginning, have now been ironed out and things are moving a little better, but there are still some issues out there. So, thank you.
All right, any exceptions to the consent? Mr. Lawrence, you have any exceptions?
Let's see which one it is, L.
Which one?
L.
L?
Invisible.
L. Right, Lawrence, okay.
L, that's an invisible representative we have. Never seen him. One time he came.
All right, any others? That it? Mr. Gines?
JJ.
All right, you got that one?
JJ, insurance.
Okay. Ms. Newman? You're good? Uh, JJ for Demme? I have none. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, my exception is item L.
Item L, okay, Mr. Barrett?
I don't have any exceptions, but can we get a, a report just for peace of mind from Mr. Hurd on what he's working on? Something we ask for once a year or once every six months or quarterly or something like that? Just make that a regular deal. And I know, I, I spend some time in Jackson. I stop by his office. It's right next to the Capitol when I'm there. I do know that he's, he's working for us, but just to get, get a report for those that, of what he's working on so that, for those that aren't in contact with him can, can know that.
Definitely do that and going over some of the things we don't want to relieve a lot or unveil some strategies.
Correct, yeah.
Update each and every one of your groups.
Yeah, like I said, I, I know Mr. Hurd pretty well. I, I know that he's, he's working for us and, but just if we can get, get that to, to assure everyone else.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. All in favor of the consent agenda with the exceptions noted? Opposed, motion carries. That leads us to code enforcement hearings.
Item A on the agenda, Apple Grove Investments, Inc., 251 Strangie Avenue. This property is still in violation.
Are there other items beside grass cutting up there?
There might be some furniture or something out in there, but it's mostly grass.
I'm just saying. Okay, anyone here speak on behalf of Apple? This case is closed. Item B?
Item B is Rhea M. Slaughter, Janerzett, and it's 184 Ritz 80th Street, and that case has been resolved.
All right, item C?
Item C is Excellent Holdings Corporation, 411 Anglada Street. The property is still in violation.
I'm going to ask a question again. Is that grass cutting or are there any other items beside grass cutting?
You could actually see some pieces of furniture laid out amongst the grass.
Thought that was a tree growing, but, okay, is there anyone here to represent Excellent Holdings Corporation? There being known this case is closed. Item D?
Margaret L. Benedict, 989 Bluff Ridge. This case has been resolved.
Okay, item E?
Item E, Sunny and Duen Nguyen, 7129 East Larkin Place. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Sunny and Duen Nguyen? There being known this case is closed. Item F?
Tony J. Skrometa Estate, 328 St. Mary Boulevard. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Tony J. Skrometa? There being no one, this case is closed. Move on to the routine agenda, some move. All right, move by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Walt's not here? Bo-vo. We had any data, any, are coming, money coming in?
Not yet, I think.
1.75 million, Duen.
1.75 million?
Correct.
All right.
That was my, that was my assignment, Walt, and I.
And I actually, Jerry, I know we got a lot of these things demolished from some of these spots. Anne Lung's been 17 years. Have you ever done anything with Anne Lung, property in Oklahoma? We're trying to get that demolished. 17 years of putting up with the whole neighborhood.
It's coming to the council.
I mean, when we coming? You could tell me that, when is it coming?
The White House is coming. We got, there's certain few processes.
Well, 17 years is long enough, I know. 17 years, we're doing the processes.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. All in favor of the routine agenda? Those opposed? Motion carries. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recess in memory of Mr. Victor Marver.
Seconded by everybody.
All in favor? Those opposed, we stand in recess.
Thank you.